Sorry I'm late, sorry we're late. I'd like to close meeting to order, please stand with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor of coming out of executive session?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, a little out of order, but it'll work. This is just magic, okay? We have two presentations to enjoy tonight, and our first one is Mrs. June Lombardi. Hi June.
Good evening, everyone.
Does she need a mic phone?
May I use your mic?
I talk with my hand.
No, you need the mic. Talk with one hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Closer.
Louder.
In kindergarten, one of the things that we learn about is taking care of our earth. And we talk about it all year long. To kind of go quickly through this, one of the things we do is invite Mr. Bill Cutler in from the Sullivan County Transfer Station to talk to the kids, and he does a great job. He also allows us to go to the Highland Transfer Station when the public is not allowed to be there on a closed day, so it's safe for the kids. And it's really exciting for them to see metal getting crushed and stuff in the recycle bins, so we get pictures by the bulldozers and they have fun. So, fast forward a little bit, in talking to Mr. Cutler, he said that in 2011, they did a case study for this school about recycling and conserving and all of the things that we're starting to talk about now, reusable energy and solar, sustainability for our district, and I'm kind of excited about it again. He would be willing to help us with creating a compost, he would encourage us to do away with styrofoam and squaws and figure out ways that we could save the district money, help the earth, and help the children, because the children are our future. And, you know, I'm getting old, so like, how many more years do I have? You know, do I care? I do care, you know? But the little kids, they have a whole life ahead of them, and they're excited about the empowerment that we give them in kindergarten. We always let them know how wonderful and how great they are and all of the amazing things they can do already to make a difference. So, I said to Mr. Cutler, would you come and do a presentation for the board? And he said, I have a better idea, why don't you let the children do a little presentation? So, we did a video out on the playground, and it's a little, I don't have, I'm not a professional videotaper or musical director, but I gave them a scenario, give each little group of kids a scenario, and I said, okay, and then, so you start talking with your friends and just reacting to one another. And by gosh, talk about impromptu and ad libbing. These little five-year-olds, I can't believe, even if you can't hear everything and even if the message isn't as thorough as I would have liked it to have been, you just got, it's just amazing that these little kids just went with the flow. I couldn't do that until I got into college. So, anyway, there is, the 2011 study is in front of you, there's some other information, I put some literature over there. The video is not working unfortunately, but we'll post it tomorrow on Facebook so you can see it. And just please enjoy the little kids, thank you for listening, I hope we can have more detailed conversations. I think that for a, we're a little school, but we really could do amazing things and set ourselves apart with thinking outside of the box and being proactive, and anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good job, thank you. Okay, well that was delightful.
Yeah.
Love it. All right, and now we have another presentation, I believe Sue Wheeler is going to join us, and she's here somewhere, and there she is, hello, Mrs. Wheeler.
Sue has been working with us this year for ten days doing ELA and literacy, and will be working with us in the fall on mathematics so that we can improve our outcomes. And Sue has many years of experience, she recently retired from Pearl River School District, some of you may remember that I worked there as well. I know Sue for thirty years, and she is a consummate professional in the best of what she does, and we're lucky to have her here. Thanks.
Is that better?
Yeah. Close to your mouth.
That's a tough act to follow, that was up on the stage, that's what I can do. First, I want to say thank you to the faculty, the staff, and the administrators. Every time that I came into the district, everyone was extremely welcoming, willing to share their ideas, and open to hearing some other new ideas. So, after those visits, and we had a superintendent's conference day, we kind of met with Dr. Morgano, the administrators, and put together kind of a, it's actually a three-year plan in terms of moving the district forward academically. So, that's what I'm going to try to encapsulate here. You'll begin to see a recurring theme, I hope, because it's not just, we started with literacy, and I use that term in a broader, in a broader sense than just ELA, because without literacy, there isn't much learning that's going to happen. Because it's not just about reading, and it's not just about writing, it's about speaking and listening. So it's very hard to learn anything, it's not impossible, but it's harder to learn anything, without well-developed literacy skills. So that, you'll see one line right here, if I had a highlighter or if I knew how to use this a little better, nope, it says, "Write with precision, read with understanding, and speak in ways that communicate thinking clearly." I think we can all agree, we want our students from pre-K all the way up through to have those skills and keep developing those skills to a greater and greater level of sophistication. That's what they need in order to be citizens in this century or the next or beyond. So, we started this work, or refocused the work, I should say, on the superintendent's conference day that was held in April. So all of the faculty, whether they were English teachers, whether they're elementary teachers, science, social studies, phys ed, music, art, everybody looked at the K, actually pre-K to 12 in Eldred, literacy standards, because they're not just written for people teaching English or English Language Arts. You cannot teach science without also teaching scientific literacy. You can't teach math without teaching mathematical literacy, or music literacy, or you can hear a lot about technology literacy. Everyone has a component, and everyone has a responsibility to do what they can for each individual student. The other thing that begins to happen when all faculty meets together is you begin to get a K to 12 or a pre-K to 12 line of sight. So, high school teachers, faculty begin to understand what's happening at the middle school in terms of preparation, in terms of learning, and middle school teachers, elementary, so that you begin to get that consistent growth in line of sight, a pre-K to 12. So, this is where I hope you'll begin to see, going forward, the work that's going to happen by content area. So, the first step, and this is what we began on superintendent's conference day, is to develop and follow pacing calendar. All of these align to the New York State Learning Standards. Now, before you cringe at that New York State Learning Standards, they've been in existence since the early nineties. There've been several reiterations of them, there've been some misalignment of naming of them, so if you take the word common core and just put it out there, forget about that, and focus on the learning standards and the learning that's included, you'll be in a much better place. They're now called Next Generation Learning Standards for the most part, and those are the ones we're going to focus on. So in English Language Arts and Literacies, those, the last reiteration of those, reiteration of those was in 2017, so those are the ones we're using. So it's a pacing guide first and foremost, so that we know what's happening September to June, and then you develop the curriculum depth off of those pacing guides. And then you begin to look at instructional strategies that are aligned, assessments that are aligned, gather the data from those assessments throughout the year, know where kids are, know where they might need additional assistance, and begin to look at year over year where you may need to make some instructional changes. Addition to the assessments that teachers use, this district uses an outside vendor, Renaissance Learning for the STAR assessments. Those assessments have a wealth of information that assists teachers with instruction. So, the idea is to use those on a regular basis, quarterly basis, to evaluate progress as well as use the instructional information and make modifications where needed. And as this whole process goes on, the sequencing, the mapping, use of assessments, you begin to look at what resources are currently in the district, what resources might the district need to purchase over time, and whether that's wholesale or that's grade by grade, however that works out, and I know how, having done this for a long time, I know that that's very dependent on the finances, because resources are not typically inexpensive. Why do I say, why do we need to do all of that? Well, there's data that supports all of this in terms of student performance, and I know that the focus in Eldred is improving student performance, it's the focus in every district. Can you see that?
Yes.
So, this data is based off of, it's public data from the New York State website. So, you'll see here, this was just last spring, it's not this year, 2018. New York State in each grade, average needs school. What that is, is all of the districts that have the same financial standing relative to each other in Eldred. Eldred is in the average needs school category.
Now, one of the variables in that particular report is the number of kids that took it that's depressed. The number of students that took it this year is up to the level it should be, about ninety-five percent. I think that was sixty-seven.
In each year?
There was a feeling here for a while that the kids shouldn't take the state test. You know, if you live here, you got a letter from me telling you, I believe they should take it. And it's important to have data based on the total population, not a partial, because then the outcomes are skewed. But we're up to ninety-five percent, and I appreciate the parents taking that seriously, because without this, you can't act without data. I worked with a gentleman for a number of years who told me, never proceed ahead of the data, and that's good advice. So, going forward, we'll have more accurate data, but this is what we have for now.
Just, I'm going to just take a little bird walk on the data. It's also important to have multiple sources of data, and some of those sources, it's typically called a triangulation of the data, so that you at least have three different data points. So, by using classroom performance, which teachers know really well, in addition to the STAR data, in addition to the state data, now you have three points of data that you can look at and determine, is it a fluke, is it a trend, is it something that we need to pay attention to or not? You don't want to ping pong, but you want to have multiple sources of data to be able to make those decisions. So this is where, and I don't know, the 2019, when the data comes out over the summer and the fall, I'll update all this information and get it to Dr. Morgano so that you have it, and you can begin to look at from year to year where you are.
So are those percentages for Eldred based on class?
Yeah, no, it's based on the curriculum.
It's based on?
And not at-level student score? Obviously, I mean, I'm sure these are not the numbers you want to see on the next go round or future go round. Now, the three through eight testing is really, the idea of that and the use of that is to determine where do we need to change either our instruction or work with individual students so that eventually, as they get to eleventh grade, they're successful on the English regions. Those regions, the region exams have been around since eighteen ninety, late in eighteen ninety.
They even had them in marines.
Yeah, they like, oh, eighteen ninety. So, they're not going anywhere. And now, the diploma for New York State is the region's diploma, the five-region diploma. English, algebra, global, US, and A-science. Those five to get the New York State diploma. So, you see here, the passing rate, you have twenty-two percent of the students, and again, it's a small N, so that changes the data slightly, but what happened to those twenty-two percent of the students? They could still be enrolled, they could have gone to a GEP program, but I think ultimately the goal is that, in somewhere in the nineties, that kids graduating with a region's diploma. And you also want to keep increasing the whole idea of the mass lead and moving up the number of students who are at the higher level of that. Okay, that's the big picture for ELA. Now, we'll begin to see some of the trends here. And you look at math, again, Next Generation Standards in mathematics were updated in 2017, those are the standards we're operating under for instruction and curriculum. Develop a pacing guide, develop the in-depth curriculum maps with the power standards by grade. In mathematics, it's a little bit easier because the state has pretty much said, this is what you teach in each grade, that makes it much easier for districts to develop their pacing guides and look for resources. Instructional strategies is probably the trickiest one in math because they're different than what we learn. So, we have to step aside of how we learned it, teach it a different way, because the biggest difference in the mathematical standards is the idea of understanding mathematics, not just the rote arithmetic. The days of pages of multiplication tables, I mean multiplication problems or addition problems are gone, and it's about problem solving. It's about, in my experience in math, it was, you get the math homework, do all the problems, you know, all the additions, don't bother, you don't have to do the word problems, we'll do those together. Life is not about pages of addition and subtraction or multiplication. It's all about word problems, and that has shifted. The balance is definitely undeveloped understanding, and when you can take a step back as a parent, as a, perhaps as a grandparent, as a teacher, and watch kids' mathematical understanding and how they can explain it, you'll be amazed at what they can do. But you have to be willing to hold on to your, just do it this way and get the right answers. Again, you'll see, utilize the STAR assessments, use the data in the STAR assessments to help inform instruction for the group and for individuals. Now, we had looked at a new, began to have a conversation around a new math resource, that would be part of the work, the kind of focus of the work in the fall along with the curriculum, is to choose a resource, K through, well, it doesn't go K through twelve, it'll go K to eight and then contents specific, for algebra, geometry, and trig, perhaps calculus, who knows? But that's part of the work for this coming school year, is to have that in place as the budget develops and be able to grow.
We looked at school districts that are high performing, and they approach, and they're talking about why, that's, is there a choice, so I think you call it?
Right, right. As the standards change, districts typically look at what's out there in terms of meeting the needs of their students and the instructional changes in the standards. So we took a look at some districts that are high-performing in mathematics, and they are actually in that same review process in terms of taking a resource that might be five or six or eight years old and saying, okay, we need to up our game again, so let's find another ones. And there are some brand-new ones, like, twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. So that's one of the goals for mathematics. So, in mathematics, you see the same, this is the same curve with ELA in terms of, again, only those students who took it. In 2018, I don't know in Eldred, but generally more kids take math than they do in ELA. I'm not sure what that is, but it is. And again, these are numbers we're looking to change. You don't want to be twenty-seven percent proficient in mathematics. Then it goes on to the region's exams. So, this is the gatekeeper exam, algebra, in order to get the region's diploma. Now, in order to get the advanced region's diploma, you need these other two. And the advanced region's diploma rate in Eldred is, I don't think where you want it to be. So, in order to do that, we need to build up the mathematical skills from K, pre-K, all the way up through algebra, and also encourage more and more students to take geometry and trig in order to even qualify for the advanced region's diploma. You need those three regions. But you can see that the numbers go down, forty-eight, thirty, twenty-eight. And you can't opt out of the regions, so those are the kids enrolled in those courses. You can't take the course and not take the region. Again, in math, right here, you want to also include that. Let me move on to science. Science standards came in next gen in 2016 and have changed by grade level. Here again, spacing guides, in-depth curriculum maps with power standards, assessment, now we don't have an outside science measure like STAR. But this year, we are, the district is moving toward, I'm probably wrong, the introduction of a new science resource, right? The thing about science that you'll begin to see
Amplified.
Is that science has become, this is a scheme, science has become much more science, technology, engineering, and now it adds arts and math to the mix, so that it's much more engineering, technology-based, and collaboratively-based, problem-solving. Most of the resources are built around that model. And in science, going forward, there are new assessments that are going to happen in science. If you've been in this for a while, you know there was a fourth, there was, or there is, a fourth-grade test, an eighth-grade test, and then it goes on to the region's exam. That is going to change, that fourth-grade test hasn't changed for probably thirty years much. Same stations when I was teaching, so it's been a while. But now that test is moving to fifth grade. More and more, the New York State is moving toward a pre-K five grouping, a six-eight grouping, and a nine-twelve grouping. So that test for science is moving to fifth grade, because the new standard are written from kindergarten to five, and then six, eight, and then nine, twelve. So, in June of twenty-two, we have twenty, twenty-one, three years for those grades based on the new standards to be ready. Then in twenty-three, it's bio and earth science regions, and in twenty-four, chemistry and physics. So those are the next ones for the state to be pointing, that hopper of new exams based on the new standards. In order to be ready, you have to start now. So, in science, these are based on, you see some trending, so in earth science, it's gone up, in living environment, up a little bit, up and down, in chemistry, we got a little bit of up and down as well. But the other thing is, look at, you have to be mindful of the numbers, so that you have kids that, you know, more kids still taking chemistry or physics. Social studies, the social studies, they call themselves the frameworks, I don't know why, but they came out in 2014, and those regions have already come into, the new regions based on the frameworks are in transition as we speak. the new regions based on the frameworks, are in transition as we speak. Again, same thing, take a look at the framework, K to five, K to twelve, develop that sequence. In social studies, it's pretty easy to do a sequence because it's usually chronological, uh, but there are grade-specific standards. Develop the curriculum maps, align the instruction and the assessments, use the data, um, identify current resources, and be mindful, especially in science and social studies, about the literacy that are involved. If you recall, it's where we started, back on superintendent's conference day. Um, then use the data from those regions. So this year, two thousand nineteen, with the framework exam, U.S. history, it's the old one until twenty-twenty, through twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, so last year, this coming school year is the last of the old one, and then it's twenty-twenty-one. Um, and you can wait, but I wouldn't advise that, because in August of twenty-twenty-one, they're not giving the old one. So if you don't do what you need to do in June, in August, you're taking the new one. That, I don't think would work too well. So that was my representation. Um, social studies performance, you see here, again, what we want to look at is to keep moving these, whoops, now what?
Squeezing.
Okay. We want to keep moving these passing numbers up into the nineties range, and then moving the mastery ones up into the fifty, sixty, seventy range. So, that's what we call the core. Beyond the core is the same process, only their standards are in a little different kind of loop from the state, um, in terms of when they've been, um, updated or rewritten. But, family and consumer science, health, world languages, physical education, visual and performing arts, those ones just came out last year. They're brand new, there's five different sections, um, and those are the ones we were working with along with literacy on superintendent's conference day. Curriculum maps, assessments, and resources. Basically, that kind of cycle across all content. And, what do you want to do on it? Because it ultimately ends up here, graduation, which is next week, right?
Yes.
So what you want eventually is that, ideally, a hundred percent of your students walk across that stage, or across the field, and get a region's diploma. That's ultimately your goal, that's everybody's goal that works here, whether they're a pre-K teacher, or they're a bus driver, or they're a secretary in an office. They want every student who walks through those doors to go across and grab, get a region's diploma. They're not there, but you can be there, with a focus on curriculum instruction, assessment, and what the data tells you about that. So the graduation rate here is a combination of the advanced regions, the regions, locals, and then you see the cohort type. Some of those students may still be enrolled, some of them may have left, um, to go, and when it says cohort, what the state looks at in math is four years from the year they started ninth grade. Those are the numbers in the cohort. So if you say fifth year, you're not, you're not counted necessarily in that data. If you say sixth year, and some kids do, and that's fine, uh, depending on their needs. Uh, but again, what you want is that this, this combined number, advanced regions and regions, is in here above ninety. The local one, you want to keep, that one's going to eventually disappear. There are many ways to get a diploma now, there's called pathways, that's another presentation because it's very, um, detailed. So, this is, this, I'm sure you can't see this, back there. Uh, I wasn't sure, you can't see it. So, on the presentation, and, and I don't know if you posted this?
Yeah.
Um, it shows graduation data for three years for Eldred and the other schools in Sullivan County, in terms of the total regions diploma rate. So, the goal is that when you look at these numbers, Eldred is always on the top and in the nineties. That's the goal. In order to get there, there's a lot of work that's going to happen, and that work already started, and it's going to continue, and as I said earlier, I was very thankful that all the teachers were so welcoming to listen, to having come into their classrooms, and to sit down and kind of hash, begin hashing out the work. So, trying to pull it all together, I always call, my work has always been what I call the CIA of education. Curriculum, spoken sequence, standards, frameworks, power standards, student learning targets, teaching points. Instruction, whatever you have to get, how do we align it, how do we relate it to student learning targets, how do we make sure we're teaching to individuals as well as to the group? And then assessment, how do we know what kids have actually learned? And whether that's our formative assessment, or it's standardized, what do we do with that, and how do we use it to further tailor the student learning and instruction? So we can't do one without the other two.
And I think, uh, we have very hard-working teachers here. What we have to do is focus on what we're doing and align, make sure things are aligned, so that our hard work is targeted. And thank you for your help, Sue.
Thank you very much.
It's much appreciated.
Okay, we have then, um, elementary principals report next, please.
Okay. Good evening, um. I'll wait for Dr. Morgano to go over a couple of things, but, at the elementary school, we've been extremely busy the last, uh, week or two here with all types of activities. Our field trips have really taken place, um, over these last couple of weeks. I'll, I'll kind of read off where we've been, and, uh, I don't know if, we have one more going. So, we've been to the transfer station, we've been to the Narrowsburg Firehouse in Romans Park, we've been to Claws and Paws, we've been to Bushkill Falls, we've been to the Time and Valleys Museum, we've been to the Lackawanna Coal Mine, we have upcoming our Mid Hudson Children's Museum for our kindergarten. Um, two nights ago, we had our academic recognition, and for those students that were in grades three through six, got recognized for their academic excellence here, and we had a great, uh, turnout from, uh, students and staff, and parents and community members, that was great. And then, last night, we had our sixth grade moving up ceremony, and I'd like to thank all the parents for putting on a nice spread afterward for our sixth graders in the, um, in the cafeteria, and it was a wonderful ceremony that we had here, uh, moving them on up to the junior, senior high school. Um, today was our last day of pre-K, they had a, um, what did they call that, going over the bridge? Yeah, something like, it's called going over the bridge, uh, the little pre-Kers, the parents came in, they, they invited them into the classroom, uh, Ms. Martel had a little, um, bridge, and the pre-Kers started on one side, and they went over the bridge to the other and collected their diploma, and so they're passed on to Ms. Labardi in kindergarten, getting ready for next year. So we're, we were excited about that, and I thank the parents for coming. It was a, it was a great type of, uh, activity to participate in. Um, we have our pre-K and kindergarten screenings, uh, over the next two days for incoming students, and tomorrow we will have, hopefully, uh, rescheduled, two days are field day, um, for tomorrow, so we're hoping that that will take place. Mrs. Wheeler was here, and she was talking about, um, all of the academic initiatives that we've kind of put in place, and I just wanted to kind of, uh, thank Caleb to look at providing us some, um, in-service professional development days for next year. I kind of have developed a schedule for the elementary school, where we will have resources come in from Sullivan BOSI's, um, to provide social studies, professional development opportunities for our teachers in September. Um, we have some ELA days that are scheduled that coincide with what we did this year, that goes through maybe February, and then we also have some math days where we're asking our math instructional services provider at BOSI's to come in and give some in-service for our staff here. So, with those three initiatives that are going on, we do, uh, need professional development opportunities for our staff to kind of put some things together and be able to communicate, um, between each other and with each other to develop curriculum for students, so.
And that's being developed in, in, um, coordination with Sue Wheeler's work?
Yes.
So it's not a separate?
Nope.
ELA?
It's all put, it's been put together, and we've kind of looked at what type of things we need, and I think there's a recommendation to kind of put in some, um, superintendent's conference days in our calendar?
There are two.
Okay.
Uh, that were, that will be added. Uh, one is the day after Halloween.
Okay.
And the other one is the day after the Super Bowl.
All right. So those are.
The second one will be focused on mathematics, the first one will be more general.
And that's all I have for you at the McKenzie Elementary School.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question on curriculum, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Will each grade scaffold off of the year before?
That's what we're expecting to have happen.
That's the goal.
Uh, Sue Wheeler talked about a pacing calendar, or pacing map?
That's what that is.
That would be able to share what happens during the year, and that it's, um, it, it builds upon the previous year, so that we don't have re-teaching of items or missed items happening where you take one curriculum from one, let's say, um, standard, and you may have taught it in fourth grade, and somebody is teaching it in third grade, and then the kids, kids don't get it because that other teacher might have been doing it, assumed it was going to be taught in fourth grade. So, we need to be consistent with what's happening in each of the grade levels.
And in that scaffolding, will it award for differentiation for students that don't obtain mastery in that topic?
We are trying to develop an opportunity for kids in every grade level next year to put in AIS into the day for each one of the, uh, grades. So that is one of the other ways that we can look at providing some assistance to kids that may not, uh, receive the instruction or understanding the first time around through our AIS program.
And what about the, uh, the mandate?
I have a lot of questions.
I'm sorry. The mandate for the, the, uh, that came down from the state with mental health, is that being looked after?
We will be addressing that with, hopefully, a new higher week today also.
Excellent.
Okay?
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to have John go next, he's got the high school report and a few other things.
The high school report, I'll try and do it justice. Uh, Mrs. Maxson is at a BOSI's graduation representing Eldred this evening, that's why she's not here. Uh, she reports that the senior trip to Boston was fabulous, and that the blood drive was very successful. Our kids always rise to the occasion, they were excellent on that trip. The athletic banquet, uh, was well-attended, a lovely ceremony, uh, the academic awards, National and Junior Honor Society, uh, she and I both attended, of course, and, uh, we have some very articulate kids. When they get up and speak, they sound like professionals. They, we've taught them well. Uh, BOSI's graduation, uh, Jean attended that. Uh, CTE and New Vision's graduation, that is where she's at this evening. The Times Show Record Scholar-Athlete Awards Breakfast, uh, we attended, and that's one where the students attend the valedictorian and salutatorium with their parents. And, it's always a fun event. Uh, we had a recognition dinner, uh, for the valedictorian and salutatorium, yearbooks have been distributed, uh, it's a great publication, there was a little overprint on page one on some of them that was fixed. NISM, our kids did fantastic. Senior Band, Level Four Gold, the highest, uh, level award ever by Eldred. And the chorus was Level Two Silver. Where's our music teacher?
One of them.
Fantastic.
Thank you!
And thanks to Mr. Hyverson, uh, we did, we do very well with our kids with music.
And it starts at the, that, that's why I think we do so well, is because we start young, with very good instruction, and Brian Dobison is not here tonight, but he needs to be credited
Absolutely.
In so many ways, for the stellar, stellar program that he runs for our students. So we need to make sure he knows that from all of us.
We'll give him a copy of this video.
Yeah.
Eldred will be awarded the School for Best Attendance for the, uh, BOSI's Award, uh, that's nice to hear.
Really?
Yeah, they do attended BOSI's.
I'm so glad they do. That's lots of preparing.
About twenty-four of the seniors took part in the self-defense for seniors, and they were a little bit safer now than they were before, and, uh, baccalaureate services were Monday evening. I think, Amadou, you were there? Someone you want to add?
Uh, Saint Anthony's in, in Yulin, and it's, uh, a time for all the seniors to get up in front of an audience and do some readings, and they were all wonderful. You wouldn't think that some people would be able to speak, but, uh, they're all wonderful. Hannah Jennings, as valedictorian, gave the remembrance, and it was singing, great participation for all.
Thank you. One of the missions that we have is to improve student attendance, and you'll see tonight on the appointment list, a homeschool liaison, that's our current security guard, Anthony Delivar. Uh, he's going to do home visits and work with our parents on improving student attendance. Student attendance is not only important for learning, it's important for our aid. We've lost money because of our student attendance. I believe Anthony can improve our student attendance to the level where he pays for himself. In terms of student safety, uh, JJ has been working on getting signs. You notice the thirty-five mile an hour flashing sign? I told him today, see if he can negotiate us leaving those signs, I'd be satisfied with that. We have to slow people down, especially in front of the high school. The trucks come barreling down that hill, and our kids pull out from the parking lot, and I just worry about somebody getting broadsided by a truck. I recommend to the Board of Education that we consider having a student council president who represents the students at the board meeting sit at the table, and that's something we can discuss going forward. The year-end review, briefly, is, we've addressed the expense side painfully by letting a number of people go. We cut about eight hundred thousand dollars in expenses. The income side is improved, and we'll have a positive fund balance at the end of the year. And, now we need to address the academics. Eldred used to be number one, and it's going to be number one again. As I said before, I did not come here to be other than number one. Uh, good news from our assemblywoman, Aileen Gunther, we have a seventy-five thousand dollar award and bullet aid, which will pay for our SROs. As you recall, I advocated for school resource officers, we're in a situation here where if we have a, an issue, somebody with a gun, somebody breaking into the school, it could take a half an hour to get the police here. That's unacceptable. There'll be an armed officer in each school, one in the high school, one in the elementary, and their job is to keep the building safe. Just a little reflection about our graduating seniors, I had the opportunity to accompany them at the water park, had the opportunity to work with them doing a little self-defense. These are great kids. I, I'm sorry to see them go, I'd like for them to stay another year, I just, just getting to know them well. Uh, when they did their prank and sold, tried to sell the school, I thought it was a, a rival. Uh, I did have a call from someone who said, you know, that's supposed to go out to bed. Uh, I said, it's a joke. I've seen, I've seen kids do senior pranks that were not good, uh, damaging buildings and, our kids don't do those kinds of things. They, they had a great time, they put Jean's office number on the sign, they were going to put her cell phone number on the sign, but their advisor talked them out. And... And I'm going to miss them, and I am looking forward to talking to them at graduation about not being so attached to their phones. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Questions? Caleb, can we have the district treasurer's report, please?
Sure. All right, so just to update you guys on the budget, you guys should have a budget status report there. As of yesterday, there was still $287,000 not encumbered, which means that it hasn't been set any kind of expense. I still expect us in the same place that I expected us at the beginning of last year when we passed the budget. Somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 will go into the fund balance this year. It looks like we're going to land right into there. And that was as of yesterday, which, you know, there's only 11 days left.
And that's thanks to you, Caleb. Thank you.
We have, I have the free lunch application for the elementary school just about filled out. I anticipate entering it in tomorrow. So, hopefully, at the next regular board meeting, I won't know by the reorg meeting, I'll be able to tell you whether we've been accepted in the program. I don't anticipate that.
Have we raised our numbers of?
Yes. What I discovered was that you can apply by building.
Oh.
So, while we don't meet the criteria in the high school yet?
Yes.
We do meet it in the elementary school, and I don't see any reason not to sign up.
Well, that's fantastic, though.
And hopefully, the.
Do you want to explain what that means in terms of kids?
Tell everybody more about the free lunch program, please.
So, what that will mean is that in the elementary school, breakfast and lunch will be provided free to every student.
Every, every.
Nobody needs to apply for free lunch. Doesn't matter. Everybody gets one meal for both breakfast and lunch for free, and the federal government reimburses us for each meal provided.
Because we've hit a certain number of children in need, parents, poverty, whatever you want to call it, a certain level, and the government requires that you ask for an application from anybody who might meet that standard or might meet that level, and then that puts us over, so that means our percentage of free.
And we've had those numbers for some time.
We just didn't.
The parents didn't apply for it, and we've encouraged them, if they otherwise qualified, to apply, and they have.
And we sent out a letter at the beginning of the year that raised our numbers from, I believe it was 36 or 37 percent to 41 in the elementary school.
And that gives us an insight into our own district as well. If 41 percent of our children qualify for free and reduced lunch, that tells us a little bit more about our own community as well. So, I'm so grateful that they applied. I'm so glad that we're able to provide breakfast and lunch all year long, free to all of our students. That's just incredible.
And yeah, and hopefully, the high school will follow. We'll continue to campaign this year to get people who are cool, qualified onboard, and then nobody will ever have to apply for it again. We'll just.
Oh, it's not each year?
We enter a five-year program.
Right.
Because that will work, and then they renew it every five years. So, we also have an upcoming audit.
Yet again.
We were selected for a tax cap audit, which is a review of our calculation of the tax cap. It's going to cover both last year's tax cap and this year's tax cap. And then, of course, we have our normal annual, every-year audit, which will be starting in July. We have a cafeteria audit, which is wrapping up. That has gone with.
Has it?
Yes.
And these reports will come to the board?
Yes, they will all come to the board. The cafeteria one you should see shortly, because that's wrapping up. The tax cap one's just starting, but it's a shorter audit. There's not as much to review with the tax cap.
Well, it's not surprising. This is our fifth audit, right? Fifth?
Yeah, we have cafeteria audit, we had a general controllers audit, we had a Title I audit, we have this tax cap audit, and I guess I'm including the regular audit as a fifth. So, it's the fourth one done by the state.
We kind of rose above the waves when we were identified as a fiscally stressed district, one of the most fiscally stressed districts in the state. So, consequently, we kind of rose above the waves, and five audits later, we're not surprised they're sending Albany down here to audit everything.
And all audits come out fine.
And our audits all come out fine, because that's not our problem, running a good school district and caring about where our money goes and all of those things. But, and we've got Caleb at the helm, so that's a good thing.
And then, my only other update is that the pre-K and IDEA grant applications are going to be going in shortly. They were held up by the state. Pre-K, same amount of money as last year, IDEA grant is similar. Title I allocations haven't been out, and the state seems to be a little bit behind on all of their granting amounts, so I don't know whether we're losing or gaining Title I yet.
I have one more item for you.
Okay.
I would like for you to review what's going to happen to people's taxes now that they approve the budget, that they're going to go down.
Oh, they should go down about 12.7%.
12.7% decline?
Yeah.
This year?
This year. And next year, they're going to go back up to that level that they are now?
Correct.
People need to know that and keep hearing it, because it's nice that it's going down 12.7 now, when it goes up the following year?
Don't complain.
It's going to rise up to the same level it is now, right? Not more.
The intent is to present the budget with an 18, 19 tax, or with a 2021 tax, the same as 18.
Very good, and very good to know. Caleb, do you have more for us?
I do not.
I will say that Caleb and Scott were very helpful in securing the money from the Assemblywoman. That is not something every school automatically gets. Assemblywoman Gunther, we're going to have an assembly for her in the fall, because she's done a great deal to help us stay safe. The lock, the alarms on the doors, the laminating of the windows, the paving outside in the elementary, the card readers, that's all money we got from the Assemblywoman.
Now the SROs.
The SROs.
So, at least five different areas.
We couldn't do any of that without her help.
She's been wonderful to Eldred, and many of us know her and enjoy seeing her, and we all have Eldred on our forehead, so they, whenever I see her, she knows I'm happy about what she's done with Eldred.
And I didn't have to drive to Albany.
Right, right, right.
You weren't alone. We took a trip to Albany, we had a 10-minute meeting with Senator Metzger. I'm still waiting for the check.
It's in the mail.
Questions for Caleb? Okay. Board President's Report. I basically got back about halfway, got back from Germany about halfway through this month, and was able to attend the athletic banquet, and then also able to attend the CTE graduation, or the graduation from BOSI's.
Special Ed.
Yes, the special ed graduation, because they have so many of them.
Yes, they do.
Special Ed graduation, and three of our students were well-represented, and I was very proud of them, and the legacy they left behind, and the behavior, and the grades, and the future plans, it's really wonderful. So, it's fun to be a part of those things, and this being my absolute last meeting, it was especially fun this month to be involved in those, and I'm looking forward immensely to graduation. A perfect 70-degree day. Okay? Okay. That's all I've got. All right, so we are up to, any questions for me, by the way? Trying to be very proper here. Okay? Thank you.
Well, on the personal note, I will thank you for serving as president. You've been the best, and I've worked with boards before that were a little difficult. Carol will always say, if I pick up the phone, she's at my front door 15 minutes later, and we could spend two hours talking, and the time flies by. Having the support of the board president and the board is very important for a superintendent to get anything done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public comment on the consent agenda only, limited to the consent agenda. Anybody wants to come up? Use the microphone. Please come to the podium. Tell us who you are. Don't think we know you. Come on up. Guys, comments. Ooh, it's a quiet group tonight.
We've answered every question.
We've answered your questions, then, hopefully. Okay. We have a consent agenda that is extensive. It is 601 through 10. 10-1 is the vote on the consent agenda. Yes. We have some special people with us tonight, so we want to make sure they.
I want to introduce Laura Moon, who's our new special ed teacher.
Stand up.
And Laura will be working at the high school, and Vanessa McWilliams, our new psychologist for the elementary. And Laura will be at the elementary, working hard.
Vanessa.
Vanessa.
That's good.
Sorry. I can't remember my own kids' names.
We do have a few other. You just heard about Anthony, and we are approving the contracts of people that are already here, but there's quite a bit. So, if you have any questions, first of all, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Discussion on any of the consent agenda items, because there are quite a few. Or clarifications. The difference between we are appointing some substitutes in 8.01, and in 8.02, we are appointing a substitute. Can you clarify that?
You have to establish a position before you can appoint a person.
That's it. Okay, I see. So, we are establishing that extra position. All right. And then, we have some summer workers, which I think is a wonderful thing to be able to do and get things done in the summer. And we are making a new teacher aide position at the elementary for 6.5 hours a day. We are approving Caleb and Lisa and Melissa's contracts, et cetera. Our full-time school psychologist is going to be a welcome addition. I'm very happy to have you onboard, and as well, Laura. It's really good to have you. We should talk. I was special ed all my career. All right, then we have all the coordinators. Are there any questions? From the, I know you've looked over this, you get this ahead of time, you've had opportunities, but just because it's so long, I'm asking. I like the school service scholarship. Where did that come from? What idea was that? 9.04, I love it. School service scholarships.
Is that yours, Bonnie?
Somebody's giving our kids money. Who's giving our kids money? I love it, but I don't know who.
Mrs. Gola.
Really?
And we appreciate, I met with her, and we talked about this.
Okay. Excellent. Very good.
We thank her. She's very supportive of our school district.
Yes. That's how, it was 9.04.
9.06, will we have to replace XIs pianos?
No. We're going with electronic pianos.
Yeah.
Because whenever you move a piano, and you move them a lot, they have to be two. And after years of that, they need so much work, it just pays to buy an electric one for you.
Do we sell them, then?
I don't know. Nobody buys used pianos.
Yeah.
I tried to get rid of my daughters. I donated it to the town. It sits out in the rain.
Okay. They make good planters. To Farsberg.
Everybody wants an electric piano.
Okay. So, then I will call for a vote on the consent agenda, beginning with Miss Smith. And, yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, and I will vote yes. Thank you very much. I should either go in order or not start with. Okay. So, any old business? We are at number 11. Old business from the board. New business from the board. All our businesses on the consent agenda. Okay? And second public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment on anything in particular? No? Okay. We have some announcements, I see. Next meeting will be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, July 2nd. It's the reorganization meeting, and it will be here at McKenzie Elementary School.
Is that a 6:00 PM start, or is that a 6:00 PM with a executive session ahead of time?
Start.
It's a start right now. We have not identified an executive session.
That's fine. Okay.
All right.
I have an announcement?
Yes.
We'd like to honor tonight someone who's devoted their life to children and families, and who's devoted the last 10 years of their life to Eldred families, Eldred children, Eldred taxpayers, Eldred employees. So, this is presented to Carol Bleefernick, with grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding leadership, to our students, faculty, staff, and the community. Thank you for your 10 years of service as a member of the Eldred Central School District Board of Education, June 21, 2019.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much. It has really been a pleasure, even through some tough times, to be a part of this board, and a very supportive group of people, and a couple of really wonderful superintendents to learn from. So, thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion to end this meeting.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I got a second. Are you in favor? Yes, you are. We all are in favor. Thank you very much. All right, this meeting is adjourned.